Call to order the Monday, June thirteenth meeting of Pansville City Council. Can Kirk call the roll please?
Bill Mike.
Here.
Thomas.
Yes ma'am.
David. Jim.
Here.
Sarah.
Here.
Sean.
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the meeting for May the ninth and also the special meeting on June the first?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Any comments or questions concerning the departmental reports?
I think a motion we approve, folks. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Uh, can we have a motion please to pay the bills as presented?
I make that motion. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be no announcements this evening. We've got a long agenda. Uh, item number one of business is we've found three more old vehicles that don't run over there that we wanna, we wanna surplus and determine how the best way, I don't know that Gov. Deals is the way to get rid of those because...
What happened with the other one? We were putting on Gov. Deals. We put a minimum bid on it.
As of today, the bid is fourteen thousand.
Does it just stay on there until it gets to the amount?
No, there's a cutoff time which is sometime this week. I can't remember the day. It's some, it's Wednesday or Thursday, but if you go on GovDeals.com and you type in Pansville, it's up there. It'll, it'll come right up there and you can keep up with it.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna keep up with it, but what did we set that at?
Seventeen, eighteen, eighteen thousand.
And that was Bluewood Cross.
Yeah, yeah. We may have to revisit that.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna, we might, who knows?
Right now is a problem.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's had a couple thousand people look at it and I think about twenty-two different bids on it.
I make a motion to approve the surplus in those three vehicles.
All in favor? Opposed? Yeah, if, uh, yeah, it's just junk. Just junk. Unless your bid night, it's a very, it's a very good vehicle. Yeah, engine blew up. We've been waiting for about three years to put this on the agenda. Uh, we have the okay to bid the sidewalk project that we received a grant on about two or three years ago. A hundred eighty thousand dollars, Regina, and it includes, it includes, uh, a lot of Third Street, Elm Street, Brown Street, and West Street where it is, replaces sidewalks. So we'll be, we'll, we'll be, with your all's approval, we'll be bidding that project, uh, right away.
You need a motion?
Need a motion to bid the project. All in favor? Opposed? Item number three is a approved resolution for Home Win Security Grant. Jerry or Regina, one, can you help me out there?
He'll tell you about them all round.
That's the way it always worked.
She does all the work. Uh, the Home Win Security Grant application is open now and I've talked with the choose, with the mayor, and we'd like to do a, uh, project application with them for, uh, three AEDs on that for fifty layers and one's for direct center, one for the pro shop, and one for the swimming pool.
Is that the only place we need them?
That's...
Is that the maximum we can do?
That we currently came up with, you know.
My cycle spring in the swimming pool and the break center and golf course.
That makes sense.
So, within the same resolution, of course, Virgil can reflect this in the minutes, uh, but also I'd like to do a nine-one-one communications, uh, application for a satellite, radio slash telephone and what the state calls the D marks radio. We've tried this application numerous times, but we keep going back trying to get those two pieces of communication equipment for nine-one-one. What that in time is us to do if all of our infrastructure are out, phone lines, cell phones, the whole deal. With satellite, we could have at least communication with Frankfurt. Uh, I've got a satellite phone in my vehicle. I already have communications with Albee Hall and, uh, the Health Department. Every hospital and every health department in the state of Kentucky has a satellite radio slash phone, okay? So technically that gives me satellite communication with Highlands or Pipe War or whoever, if we lost all of our phone lines.
If you're in your truck.
If I'm in my truck. Now, if I'm not in my truck and I'm in Lexington, it'd be real nice if this by satellite radio, uh, for it to give them...
Some of the things happening today, you never know.
Is this all in the same grant?
Yeah. Well, no, it'd be two different grants. But we need just one resolution and Virgil will reflect that, so that, that's why we need your all's approval on to do that resolution.
Yeah. Make a motion that we approve that resolution?
I'll second.
All in favor? Opposed? Approval to advertise for bids, number four, uh, for the Recreation Center Generator Grant Project.
Is this the same one we had on, uh, what, we have two or three of those generators?
We've got and currently are using one at City Hall, uh, and one for the forest station.
Okay. And now you need one here.
I thought we were going for three.
This, this one has been approved, uh, but we have to go bid. And there again, in the minutes, we can reflect that we need to advertise for bids for the generator itself and the electrical one. So that, that's a pretty big deal. So we just need approval to go to bid for the generator project.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Uh, item number five, I'd ask for approval to advertise for the, uh, for the fire engine that we found out about last meeting, I guess, that we got a two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand...
Three, seven, three hundred something.
Three hundred and what? Three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar grant to buy a new fire engine. Our, uh, our match is sixteen thousand. So we just need, at this point, uh, we need to advertise for bids for that piece of equipment and any questions?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor? Opposed?
Is it right, it's equal, it takes, it takes about a year to get that part, it has to be built though. I was talking to some of the department, you know, I would ask them about, you know, about it, and they talk like that it takes, it has, those things have to be special, you know, constructed, which I can understand that the bid, not necessarily a cabin chassis, but...
It's a ladder truck, isn't it?
Isn't it like, it's not a...
It's a rescue pump, uh, and I don't know about a year and, you know, and all depends on who gets the bid.
Right, but, but they don't even have these things?
Inside, if you award the bid, they're not gonna bring a truck next week.
That's what I mean, they don't even have these things sitting on the lot.
Yeah, it, it'll have to be built.
Couple bidders I've talked to lately have been telling me they're about seven, eight months out. Uh, I've had trucks that took two years before.
Who did?
I've had trucks that have taken two years to build.
We, we have just got a new truck and I think, where do you come out of the building? Out west. And it took six or eight months for them to... Oh, eighteen months, yeah, okay.
I have security, so I mean, I'm just...
Sounds like we need to get that started.
Okay, item number six is acceptance of insurance proposals. We do, uh, we do have our property and liability insurance proposals in. We had, uh, one bidder. We had more than one person that took information with the intent to bid, but we only came back with one bid and that was, uh, our, uh, through our agent that got, got the bid last year, Jeremy Blair, and the rate for our property insurance went down by a thousand dollars from last year, roughly a thousand dollars. Uh, our workers' comp rate, it's through, and that's through, uh, what's the name of the company?
KLC.
No.
On the package, it's Wright Insurance.
Wright Insurance, yes. Same insurance company we had last year, and KLC, uh, is the workers' comp carrier, the only one that gave us a quote, and that went up about forty thousand dollars. And that is directly related to the, what's it called? Experience mod, and we've had, uh, multiple workers' comp claims.
And I just wanna give you a brief overview. It wasn't that Wright was the only insurance company that I sent it out to. Travelers knew that they weren't gonna be competitive, so they declined to quote selective, same situation. They knew they weren't gonna be competitive. Once I started getting in renewals and I saw it was gonna be a flat, if not cheaper renewal, they couldn't compete on it last year and they didn't waste their time to do it on this year. I have emails to prove all that. I took it to Kimmy for the work comp to see if they would compete with Kentucky League of Cities. I showed them the quote. Once you get above a one-point-four-three E-mod, so what that means is, is when you have work comp claims, basically you start at even, you start at one, okay? If you have very few claims, that modification will go down from one to like a point eight or a point nine. We're at a one-point-four-three, that means that the claims were what's driving this rate up. Once it got above a one-point-four, so you see that point four is really a debit. They're, they're charging that extra point four because of the claims. Once we got above a one-point-four, Kimmy could not be competitive because anything above a one-point-four, they can't get credits. So I sent it to them, they couldn't do it. I'll say one of the good things that I will say about this is with the package, this will be three years in a row that we've effectively lowered your package. I can almost guarantee that that's never, ever happened. And I would almost guarantee it probably never happened two years in a row, so three years in a row, we've been able to do that. I've gone out and created competition amongst these companies, like I said I would do, and that's the reason it stayed flat. And due to, we, y'all had a lot of claims last year on the package, so kudos to you guys on that. Uh, so that's what it is and, uh...
So you're saying the workman's comp is one-point-four-three because we've had a number of claims?
We've had a number of claims and it's primarily driven by the ambulance.
Seems like last year...
Back injury and so forth.
Seems like last year, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong here, but, uh, whenever you and then we had the proposal or the quote from, uh, the other company, they actually were less on the...
And you stayed, and you stayed with them, this is in company. So what's happened from last year to this year, it's gone up from a one-point-two-nine modification to a one-point-four-three.
That's forty thousand dollars.
Fourteen percent. Some of that changes would be adjustments in payroll, but for the most part, it's the claims activity and it's going from a one-point-two-nine to a one-point-four-three.
Now, I noticed here, uh, you have some kind of italic there, it says, uh, under coverage terrorism, and it went, it says sixteen hundred and it says twenty-six hundred in the renewal, so it's an increase of a thousand dollars.
Yeah, and on top, you don't have to take the terrorism if you don't want it, but the reason that terrorism...
What is it insuring us against? You insure that we'll not have any terrorist attack?
I, no, I'm not gonna tell you that. So that's, that's up for you guys to decide. Do we think that we're gonna have a terrorist attack? And I will say included in terrorism is domestic terrorism, the same as any other type of terrorism. So if you're asking me if you should take it, I, I'm not gonna answer that question. Y'all, y'all come up with your own.
I guess what it was entail, what are we paying for? I mean, if, if something were to happen, say this building gets blown up, all right, the government, federal government comes in and declares it an act of terrorism, then that terrorism coverage is what's gonna pay for that.
If, if you do not, if it's deemed, if they say that that's an act of terrorism and you don't have a terrorism coverage, terrorism is excluded.
So, so within the property insurance, you're saying that we carry on all the city buildings, that if it is deemed an act of terrorism, that the insurance company goes, no, we don't, we don't cover terrorism?
You've got it on there right now. So if you say, I don't wanna pay that twenty-six hundred dollars, then that would be excluded.
Yes.
Yes, the answer, thank you, Bob. Yeah, I mean, it's twenty-six hundred dollars. What I'm thinking, I'm thinking, you know, I don't take it the wrong way, but the insurance companies are always looking for, you know, loopholes.
That's kinda like flooding, it's kinda like flood insurance.
If the, if the ground sinks, we're not gonna cover that or, you know...
Yeah, exactly, that's what I'm saying. Always good if you, I mean, yeah, that's fine to say you don't have it, then when it happens, you're drilled.
My thinking of, this is how you, I'm not gonna tell you, lead you in any direction. I would say as an insurance agent, I'm always gonna say it's better to have it covered than to not have it.
After this week, you're gonna say you're pretty well all right.
Yeah, and, and that's what, what gets deemed as an, an act of terrorism, and I think it's gonna continue to happen more and more, and that's the reason I brought up domestic terrorism. We've all got it worked up in our heads that it's, it, and it's gonna be some, you know, extremist group. Well, I mean, they're always gonna be extremist group, but it's gonna be some religious fanatical extremist group. That's not necessarily so anymore. Certain things can be deemed act of terrorism, you know, that we wouldn't view in our minds as what we would consider, but if it comes in and the federal government looks at that and they deem it an act of terrorism, then you're gonna wish you had that covered.
All right, then it's other questions.
Yeah, what's the bottom, what's the bottom line on the money?
Right there, three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-one dollars, and the most, and all of that, all of that increase is on the work comp. Like I said, the package actually went down. And that's because of the, the, the claims history and the...
What was it last year?
Three-thirty-three, three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand.
About thirty thousand, yeah.
I make a motion we approve the purchase of insurance. Yeah. I'll second. I hope you'll take payments. We do.
All in favor? Opposed? It's not on the, uh, I wanna add an item that relates to that. I wanna ask for approval to go ahead and negotiate and, 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 uh, and complete the, um, loan with the local bank for, uh, for payment for our insurance. Which we do annually and citizens carry that for the last two or three years and the rates, what was it, ten, three percent, something like that? And they've asked if they can do it again this year.
Gotta have a motion.
Gotta have a motion. All in favor? Opposed? Second reading of the budget. The, uh, thank you, Jeremy, you gone? Any questions or comments concerning the, uh, the finalized budget that's been out, I guess, to everybody for about a week?
Well, I, uh, went down there, met with mayor, kind of got some questions answered and made some suggestions on how it listed some things, you know. So much of a budget is, you know, you keep making the same comment, it is what it is, you know, I mean, yeah, I'd like to pay less for fuel, I'd like to pay less to the electricity company and, you know, and all that. But ultimately, I think that this council, if you look at the budget, I still think some of our revenue projections are a little, uh... But, but, again, whatever, you know, I mean, we're anticipating increases and things that are decreasing, but regardless, ultimately it comes down to, I think, a couple factors within this budget that the council at some point's gonna have to address, and not today, but at some point. And one is the golf course. I mean, financially, I, I don't believe, you know, that without continuing a tax increase on the citizens of Pansville, the city by itself can continue to support the golf course. And, and I've looked through it, honestly do, and I mean, the, the mayor and I may disagree, but, you know, that's all part of it, but, um, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, uh, I almost would be of the opinion that, uh, the golf course is separated from the city government and, and either, you know, some other solutions looked at, maybe a private individual, or that the tourism, Pansville tourism completely takes it over. But, I mean, we're getting currently from Pansville tourism, what is it, about a hundred and...
Hundred eighty-five thousand.
Hundred eighty-five thousand dollars and we're still losing eighty-five thousand dollars, you know.
Well, no, ninety-five, I think.
Okay. Yeah, ninety-five is about, yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, you're right. So anyhow, I just think that's something we have to down the road think of and, and, and it's just a concern and I think it's, you know, 'cause what's gonna happen is, you know, we put in an occupational tax increase last year.
That you're gonna lose next April.
I'm sorry?
And you're gonna lose next April.
Yeah, it, it'll go off next April, that's right. And, yeah, okay, yeah, and that was to pay off, get us back to somewhat in the black, yeah, and, and, and my theory is that...
For the golf course, that was for everything.
No, it didn't have any good golf course. Well, I mean, financially, budget, Jerry, right now, it's, it's, it's kinda holding its own. We're losing a little bit, but not much, yeah, and, and nine-one-one, same situation, but now some things changing there, that's, that's, that's coming around. I'm just saying, and I'm not picking on the golf course there, I'm just saying that that's something you have to consider 'cause what's gonna happen is...
I understand.
Okay.
And I, I agree with you, I really do. But as far as tourism goes, it's one of the best places you've got.
Then tourism should...
But I, I agree with that, and I don't know how we get them to do that, but I agree a hundred percent that they should take it off.
I mentioned that in your meeting, David, and there were some golf, meaningful golf course people in here, and they even agreed with me. I mean, they said they, they were sitting down there in the chairs and they even agreed. They said, well, you don't have any problem with the tourism taking it over. I said, that's fine, and I agree with you, Sean, I mean, we have to do something.
I understand.
And I have no problem with them doing it.
I'm not saying you do, I'm just saying, I agree with you both, but I'm saying that's just like your, uh, your home place out here instead of everything that they're supporting, you know, I think they should support the golf course a hundred percent like they do it, pretty much.
Well, let me, let me say this, that be my suggestion, and, and I'm not, I'm not arguing anything that they said, but I think if, if we expect them to do that, that we should give them a couple of years' notice or something of that nature, so they can rearrange their finances in order to handle it themselves, and, and, and it may, it may work out great for everybody.
Well, I don't know, a couple of years, I mean, it seems like you could make some modifications in a year, but...
Well, they've got, they've got, they've got, uh, substantial obligations themselves.
Obligations, okay.
Yeah, that they need to rearrange.
The other reason I brought that up, I didn't, I mean, obviously we've got a full agenda tonight, but it's just that we have to be thinking...
Well, it's kinda strange you brought that. I mean, that's fine that you did, and the other thing is, First of All, it's got a great golf course up there, the tourism supports one hundred percent, so I, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not arguing that. I know it's tough on the city.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just concerned that, that we come April and have to say for what we say or may... We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to take that, we're gonna have to go back in and put that tag.
Okay, so, so, so let's just get down to nut cutting.
There you go.
Okay, let's get down to some nut cutting. So you're looking at golf membership dues and you're saying that they're projecting seventy-five thousand as opposed to sixty thousand, five hundred?
Look at the rate there on the green.
Nah, I'm just, I, now wait a minute, Jim.
I got you, I looked at.
Jim, just slow down here a little bit, okay?
If y'all have been kind enough, come back and see me and I've explained to you why it's looking like that, 'cause there's some things going.
Okay, now, and then you're looking at golf green fees and it jumps up forty-five thousand from thirty to seventy-five thousand. But you've gotta understand, there's some things lumped in there now. I mean, it's just like you said a minute ago, a budget is a budget. You look at it, it's put on paper, but that's really not what's happening. But you're saying green fees ain't gonna go up forty-five thousand, is that what you're saying?
I don't see it.
Well, that includes, that includes current, there's, there's things lumped into, into there, and those are pretty good figures, uh, I believe, but, but I'll have to explain to you if you'll come by and, and let me do that. I will right now if I can find my budget.
Which one would you want?
Probably the reason anybody ever sends anything is showing like forty thousand, you know, the revenue, forty thousand less than the budget.
No, those, I thought, I thought, I think the golf course numbers for next, next year are pretty realistic.
But now here's the one thing I will not do sitting on this count. America impeach me if he wants to. I really don't care. I will never do anything to hurt that golf course. Simple reason is this, that's the only thing people my age, people that's in their forties and fifties have got left to go do in this town. You don't have a YMCA, you bone alley burnt down, you have nowhere to go, nothing to do, Sarah, and I will never do anything to hurt that golf course.
I don't think you...
Now, Coach, wait a minute, wait, wait just a minute. So if we wanna bring the golf course up, that's fine with me, but I'll sit here and argue with you all night long.
That's your problem, and I don't think anybody wants to argue with you. I think everybody wants the golf course. It's just how much are we willing to use taxpayer money to put into it if it's gonna continue to lose money?
We are willing to...
We're just looking at it like we look at nine-one-one or look at the ambulance, or, that's how I look at it.
Exactly, exactly, and I look at nine-one-one the same way. If you can't get your county government to work with you on keeping these things going, then we're fighting a losing battle. That's the bottom line.
Thank you. Cheating.
Nobody's suggesting, Coach, that we're, we wanna do anything to...
I didn't say anybody was suggesting.
Well, you, you made a statement, you say it once away, and then you say, oh, I'm not suggesting that, but there's no way that I'm going to do anything that's gonna hurt that golf course. Nobody suggested that, and that's just, I will make that clear as well. You're, 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 you say you're not suggesting, but you are suggesting.
Right, but you brought it up to make me suggest.
I brought it fiscally.
That's just where it is. We all agree to disagree.
We don't give my old church a dime, and tourism doesn't give them a dime, which I...
Oh, yes, we do.
Well, they didn't before, and they don't, we don't give the, we don't give the...
Where did my old church come into this?
Well, we, I was gonna talk about the three assets we do have, and I think it's the mansion, and I think it's the church, and I think it's the golf course. And I think we, we need to, I think they need to support them.
Assets house, Sarah. I mean, I, I understand what you're talking about.
Don't you just say in tourism, need to pour more, more into all three of us, what you say. I think that's what you say.
I think they're all three assets, and I think without, without one of them, it, we always, it always harms.
And another thing that I thought, you know, we've got three, and a guy that always comes back to kids, you've got three high school golf teams that play on that golf course. And you host regional tournaments, you host high school events, and... You've got three high school golf teams that play on that golf course, and you host regional tournaments, you host high school events, and I mean, you got Paintsville, even Sheldon Clark's there, and they pay us money to do that, I mean, it's not a lot, because we don't, we don't make them pay a lot, because it's for the kids. And I understand that, and that's another reason I think tourism shouldn't, because it's about the kids, it's not about us.
Well, I think it's maybe it's a conversation left for a better day, and another day, and maybe we could have, you know, it on agenda for, we can, we have less, smaller agenda. So I'll make a motion and go ahead and approve the sixteen, seventeen budget.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed?
I'm gonna ask, we table this next one? On the sewer rates, until we have a little more conversation with the, whether it's the utility board or whoever. Because I understand they're under, I know they're under a bind, but I think if it's in the next week, I don't care, I understand the situation, but I think we need to talk about that.
I think you have a number of members from utility boards, so if, if Bob can speak...
Some folks here that would like to explain, explain the need, and then y'all, if that's the way you want to vote, that's fine.
I was just talking about this.
Yeah, but, let's, before we get to that, let me, let me throw one other thing in there. Confuse me there, you have on your, you have in front of you a, a request from Paintsville Utilities to approve financing of the sewer plant repairs of six hundred and seven, seven thousand dollars, which will be handled, through six hundred thou, six hundred thousand dollars in financing, will not affect rates, and they'd like to, they'd like to make those repairs, and they'd like for the council to approve that financing, then to enter into that financing package with Citizens National Bank, ten-year fixed rate loan of two-point-seven-three-two percent, with no closing cost. Any questions or any comments on that?
I don't want to ask you questions, I'm on that, uh, do we not have any funded depreciation at all, I mean, for this?
Not, not for that, you do have depreciation accounts in relation to specific, yeah, instruments, if, or not on that, too.
Oh...
Well, what is somewhere down the road?
Like, when we, when we implemented the new water plant, you know, before we started out with the water plant, I was on the council when we first started that, okay, then we put in a funded depreciation, you know, when we started raising the rates, put that money in that funded account, so, because I know that, it's like what you're on top there right here, like, we're asking, you know, and so, so, I think in the future, if we don't have one, can we work towards getting one for any of these projects like this?
And if we got one, use it, before things get so bad that, that we have to do this.
That's what's addressed, I think months ago, we were meeting...
Exactly.
And see, we should start out raising the rates a little at a time to take care of these things, actually, I said, can we address this a little bit better, you know, I mean, and start, but, have an account to where we can start putting some money back in this depreciation.
I'll talk about fixing things before they get so bad that you gotta pay bigger money, fix them when they're broke early on, messed up.
It doesn't cost, it won't be costing...
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Rather than, to where it gets dilapidated, the EPA's gotta come in, or whoever it is that wants to find it, but...
I just create, I have, you know, so I just create, if you have a, so you want to borrow the money, if we had an depreciation account, we could pay for this, is what I'm getting at, you know what I'm saying?
But that's gonna raise the, the sewer rate?
No.
No, this, this doesn't affect sewer, this, this does not affect the sewer rate, this...
No, but tell them what, this is for the, what, the six hundred thousand...
Six hundred thousand is for, for place equipment, Paintsville Sewer Plant.
The existing...
At no cost to the people we love.
It's not raising rates if we told them.
All right, now watch the board.
Then what is this paper here asking for, eight?
That's, that's something else, that's something different.
So are we gonna approve two different things here, or not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, on this, this thing, this, you know, they're just asking for mission, commission, utilities commission's already...
They, they already... They, they've approved the project, and they've approved the...
Yeah, yeah, well, I make a motion, we allow them, or I guess would be the correct terminology here, we approve their securing of loan. I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed? Now, now we get to the other items, and I'd like to ask, I don't know how y'all want to present this, but we have Dewey Boe Cook, Boe Cook Engineering, and Bob Pack, and General Manager of Paintsville Utilities, and Tana Spencer, the Chairman, I guess, Chairman, not Tana, yeah, Chairman of Paintsville Utilities, and could y'all present to council what's going on here and why, please?
Um, like, many, not most cities of our size, we have situations where our storm sewer mixes with our sanitary sewer, and we're treating all this rainwater. This project that is proposed and pretty much required is to separate that and a good section of the downtown area, third, fourth, fifth, and then happy hall, of course, through...
Bob, could you step up here?
Sure.
Maybe all y'all, if y'all want to speak, or just...
I mean, you said it was pretty much required.
Yes.
That's not saying it's absolutely required, I guess there's a...
We have a great order with Division of Water, to address violations including in overcapacity plant. And what's overcapacity is, the rainwater affecting the system, part of it is gutters ranging to the system. The biggest part is actually the, the street, it have, have manholes, runs into, you have, your drain openings on the curb, that actually run right straight into the sanitary. And when that happens, it, it just totally overloads the, the pipes to the plant, and then the plant itself, it puts us in violation.
There, that, that order you just said right there?
Mm-hmm, violation.
What's the fine?
You don't know.
Okay, so we've been doing it, we've been non-compliance for the last year or two, or three years?
Longer than that, the, the agreed order was from two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
The violations take back two thousand eleven and twelve.
And they let us slide so long?
Be- because...
We've been doing progress.
Because we've agreed to these things, and we have a, an action plan, and the paper approved, and these items were addressed on that action plan.
And now it's cut down to the time to where it's either nut cutting, doing those plans, or you're gonna be fined, that's what I like.
And what's the fine? How much is the fine? How much they gonna fine you, twenty dollars, two hundred dollars?
Don't, don't they charge you five thousand dollars in a heartbeat for, for minor violation?
Like for a year, or like for one violation, like if they find fifteen violations, they gonna charge you five thousand dollars?
I went through it, I went through it the first time, and Robert Cooper was mayor, and it was ten thousand dollars, I'm sorry, Robert Wiley was mayor, and it was ten thousand dollars of that, and that's been a long time ago.
But they didn't fine you, did they?
No, because we fixed it.
Yeah, that's, that's what you...
Well, if you...
Basically, it's what you gotta do, you don't have any choice, guys.
Yeah, I know that, but...
I hate it, but it's the truth, and it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost eight dollars more on everybody's bill, if I'm not mistaken.
Eight, oh, eight twenty-nine.
But it's gonna have twenty-nine cents in a week.
That's a street bill.
Can I send you a bill every time my garage floods, because all that sewer doesn't big enough to carry the water, or the storm drains?
Where are you located?
Highway Street.
No storm drain?
No, he needs it.
Well, I need my drains cleaned out in front of my house, is that what you mean by that?
I mean, I think it run, I mean, it's, I seen Forest Street run over the top, and people couldn't get in their cars, where...
Well, okay, and I, and I, you know, after we've talked about this, okay, and you're, you're talking about a flat rate, and I have no problem with, with this, doing this project, you know, as I said, okay, but do have a problem with it being fair to everybody, okay, because if we put eight dollars and twenty-nine cents on everybody, okay, let's say we take somebody out here that's got a fixed income, and they draw about eight hundred dollars a month, and they use the minimum amount of sewage, okay?
All of it sewage is four times bigger than the, the water bill in the way.
We put, we put, we give them an eight dollar rate, okay, okay, let's say we go over here to, this person, this person suggested, and I thought about this going off work, and they're in jail. Let's say how many times sewage that they use compared to what that person used, okay, you're gonna charge them eight dollars and something, but yes, they're pathetic, that person, that little lady, or whoever it is, is gonna take part of that sewage that that, that the jail creates, so I think it needs to be on a percentage of the volume that they, in a normal household.
That's a good point.
Instead of, I don't think, I think it's more fair to do it that way than it is to put it on a, a...
Just an eight dollars, twenty-nine cent rate on everybody.
On everybody.
On everybody. That's everybody.
That's businesses, everybody.
See, because you got all the business, hospitals, schools, look how much sewage they create, you know what I'm saying, and look what a household creates, you know what I'm saying, so, just like you, David, you, you're gonna pay eight dollars, twenty-nine cents, if you figure that out, that, they'll prob, you'll probably pay thirty, forty percent increase to their, and ten, fifteen, because they're gonna use a whole lot more sewage, so I think it'd be fair...
Well, I guess I'd like to hear, I mean, obviously, they had some rationale, utility commission did, whenever they said, hey, let's set a flat rate, and what was that thought process, I mean...
How many, how many customers does, this, this just doesn't involve the city of Paintsville, does it?
It's all sewer companies.
Everybody in town that is, which I'd like to know how many, but it ought to be on it that aren't, but, I don't know, that'll matter, right?
How many are all, all in the sewer, and...
On, on the sewer system, you're looking in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred range.
That's pretty much the city of Paintsville.
Significant number of those are actually Oxford, West Mall, West Ham, yeah.
So again, what was the rationale, what was the thinking as to setting in a flat rate versus kind of prorating it through the gallons of water using...
I understand, I'm kind of working behind the curve here, trying to, you have to say, I understand, it's just to, just to make sure that you have a cover, but the number of customers, and let's say you try to do a percentage, and you have a large user that, that goes away for whatever reason, and you lose that, I wasn't involved in those discussions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was this something, was this something, Bob, that somebody recommended to us, is this what Division of Water recommended, or is this just something that we, that we decided to do?
Funding agency, which is rolling back the, the rates on.
How close are you before your first big fine comes?
I'll, I'll come to see me next month.
So we got a lot to think about this, no, actually, I'm not, I don't mean that, but... How fast is this, how fast, how fast does this actually have to take place?
We, we need to try to get this out to bill, for our contracts out in, in a day or two.
He said the rate is gonna go up from seven to...
It's...
Right now, the sewer rate is, is separate.
Yeah, it's, I asked her, I don't know what it is, it's, it's, currently sixteen forty-nine.
It's gonna be twenty-four or something.
Twenty-four seventy-nine.
So that's what's gonna be, that's what the rate is gonna be.
So that's on the first, that's on the first two thousand gallons, so in other words, it's, you know...
So how the rest of you city council members feel about it? Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and table this one until we can meet with the commission.
Are you making that in the motion?
I'm making that in the motion, yes, I am.
I guess, you know, Wiley, you do have, well, okay.
Got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Mr. D, did you second it?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, let me, before we vote on that, let me, let me suggest, if that's what we're gonna do, let's go ahead and set up a joint meeting between the two bodies, and that way, possibly, we could get our questions to them, and they could answer them between now and that meeting.
Anybody in, in that county, you could, could do some kind of a rate study and see what it would be, based on the volumes of people, I mean, because it's gonna be some work, I know that, but it sure be a lot nicer for all a lot of people, obviously.
You're talking about... Let me explain one reason why. The people of Paintsville have, counting the occupational tax, school tax, and everything else, have paid in the last year, probably not even a year, ten percent more than they were paying, I mean, that's the truth, and everything, I understand everything's going up, except everybody's wages. And I mean, I know it's tough, and I don't know what your all surplus is, but I, I understand that it has to be done, but these things need to be taken care of before it gets that bad. And Bob, I'm not blaming you or anybody else, and I'm just saying...
Now, the, this, this particular project...
And I know these storm drains have been bad for years, I understand that, but you gotta understand our situation, when we come in here and have to raise ten percent, count occupational taxes, city tax, I mean, the, uh, school tax, and everything else, it was given, been it on these people, and us.
And you're actually, actually right about it, I've been looking at maintenance over the years, that come back and get you, that's what we're trying to do.
Well, Bob, what did, I know there's something, I'm trying to remember, it might be about the bond, that you have to have so much in reserve, do we have that? Do we have enough of that, or is that why they're wanting to put this flat, what's a flat rate for, I guess, I should have asked that.
And it's just to make sure that this project will stand on its own.
That's, so that's what it is.
You have, you have enough to, to make your, your bond payments?
Yes.
And, and to set up those reserves.
And in case somebody like Kmart moving out, right?
Let me ask you this, there's gonna come a time, which I know it'll never happen, because it did the last time, that this eight dollars will go off. I got suckered into that the last time, didn't I, first time?
Bob, if you...
No, I didn't get that, I got water with me, although we ran double the bills, so...
What you're looking at is about twenty-four thousand dollars a month in increased revenue. If you multiply that times twelve, you're looking at three hundred thousand dollars in increased revenue to make these payments with, right? And I think Jim made a good point, that if you need three hundred thousand dollars, and our normal sewer revenue is, I don't know...
Probably more than that.
Uh, we're raising it eight dollars, it's, uh, two-thirds of that, sixteen dollars. I mean, why, why not just, why not put it on a percentage basis? And, and have the bigger users pay more, because...
Oh, like the bigger user pay more, yeah.
Yeah, pay, pay the same percentage as the smaller users, but it's more dollars.
I, I will check with Roland, I'll, I'll see if I'm rolling together.
You know how much money you need, you need three hundred thousand dollars.
If we have a, a public meeting, what you're talking about, okay, what about having, actually having a public forum, what, a public? If they would be welcome, at least, and we don't have that many, but, I mean, because we're gonna take things for this, you know that, so, you know what I'm saying?
I have no, I have no objection whatsoever, absolutely, absolutely.
Let me put this into a motion.
We've got a motion on the floor now.
All right.
You wanna, you wanna withdraw that, now we're gonna vote.
We've already talked?
I make a motion, we table it until city council meets with the commission.
Oh, you're not saying you have a...
We've got a motion in a second.
No, I do not want to have an open forum.
All right, we got a motion, and a second.
We all said, I, I did it again.
No, we didn't vote.
Ah, I said it.
All in favor? All opposed?
Well, I'm opposed if we don't have it open.
Well, we can talk to them first, but then do that.
Yeah, then we can have an open forum.
What I'm getting at is, okay, if we don't put this out to the public, in the press...
Oh, it's gonna be out to the public.
I mean, I mean, I'm talking about every which way it loses, I'm talking about in a press release, the major press release, with the, the social media, they're like, we're gonna get crucified, David, you know that, raising rates, you know that.
Okay, Jim, right here's not what I proposed on table, right here's what I want to do, I want us to sit down with utilities commission, and discuss it first, then if you want to have a public forum, we can... Then, if you wanna have a public forum, we can have one.
That's not, I just said let's have one.
That's what I wanna do first.
We can do that after, alright.
So, could, could you amend that motion to say?
Okay, I don't know how to amend it. I want the Paintsville City, I wanna table this motion, Paintsville City Council sit down with utilities commission and discuss this proposal first.
With the intent of having, having.
With the intent of having a public forum.
Now, is there a second to that?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm in second, just then.
All opposed, no.
Everybody.
Everybody's eyes. Alright. Uh, last item on the agenda is the, uh, approval of a resolution closing the books for the fiscal year two thousand fifteen, sixteen. I'll read it. Uh, whereas the city council adopted the official budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand fifteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, whereas the fiscal year will end on June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, and whereas entries for closing the fiscal year need to be made. Now, therefore be it resolved, the city treasurer be authorized to make the necessary entries to close the books for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen fiscal year. Do we have a motion to that effect?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Opposed. Now, is there, anything further from council?
No.
No.
If not.
I don't know, I said that, I'm sorry, I don't have it.
I don't have any.
If not, is there anything from the, uh, audience?
Yeah, I do.
Ginger, you've been waiting all that long.
I have, honey.
Can you, you can, you may have the floor.
I have got, I've got one question. I want to know. Next slide over to city pool, that's been there how long? Five, six years.
I've never been on it.
It's been there twelve, back to back process, twelve years.
No, no.
No, probably done there.
About twelve years.
Okay, well, I was over there today with my grandson. He had arm floaties on, he was asked to remove them before he could go down the slide. He has been doing this all these years. You tell me why? I was told, I asked why, I was told because they scratched the sides of the slide. What can an arm floatie do to the side of a slide, to a little kid going down the slide? I mean, maybe the bee floats and stuff, if you put them around your waist, but what can an arm floatie do? And, you know, I pay my tax dollars, I pay my tax dollars. I pay my tax dollars, and, you know.
Well, wait a minute. That, that, wait a minute, before you start, let Ginger, make sure she's finished with her statement.
Yeah, I understand. If it, I don't know what an arm floatie could do to the side of a slide, and there is no sign, and there's never been a sign up that you couldn't go down with an arm floatie or anything like that, it's been going on for years. And if it does put a little tiny scratch, God forbid a little tiny arm floatie hurt a slide, but if it puts a scratch, I pay my tax dollars, everybody else pays their tax dollars in Johnson County. I'm sure it can take care of a little scratch on the slide.
Alright, Roger. Now, choose.
Alright, first, I'm not here to argue, I'm not here to make excuses, I'm just here to take responsibility and clarify what is going on. My first, I'm gonna take responsibility for my staff not enforcing the rules properly. And we go through a rotation of staff every year, new lifeguards, replace old lifeguards, some things get forgotten, some things don't get mentioned. I've been there ten or twelve years. I came on the job in two thousand ten. If they were going down the float, uh, with floaties on then, that was something that I adopted, or I got into, and I took the job. But in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, that slide was shut down, and it wasn't open. The reasons for that was it needed new concrete, it needed new posts, it needed more security. It also needed new slides fixed to where the scratches, uh, the hail damage, the scuff marks on there weren't rough, to where when the kids did slide down the slide, they weren't getting cut up. So, the companies that came in and did that advised me, moving forward, to not let kids, parents, whoever, go down that slide with jeans on, anything that could scratch that slide, that includes floaties, that includes floats that go around their waist, because it will scuff up that slide. And it will scratch it. We spent, when that company came in and fixed that, we spent close to nine thousand dollars to fix that slide, probably more. But that's just the, the finish and polishing that slide and fixing the scratches and the cracks, and all the rough spots to get it out here to make it safer, you know? That's our first priority over there, safety. Now, kids can go down that slide. They can go down and have a parent waiting on them at the bottom to catch them, if they want to. Kids shouldn't go down that slide if they can't swim. But if a parent wants to go out there and catch their kid coming down that slide, that's fine. I mean, we have lifeguards. Over the day, we had three saves right there at that slide. When you come down that slide and get caught in that current, it can take you under, it can push you out, some kids will panic. You know, some won't, but we've had to save kids from that slide. I'm a fan of it. For these past three years, we've tried to enforce that. Again, I'm taking full responsibility that my staff has not been enforcing those rules properly. There's other rules over there that we have, safety's the biggest concern over there. We have to stop them from running, we have to stop them from horseplay. But our, our first responsibility is those kids, I can't have one lifeguard always supposed, last year, we tried to station a lifeguard at the bottom of that slide, just for those reasons. It worked, they were, they took a focus off other areas of the pool. So that, you know, that's all, that's it. I'm not, like I said, I'm not here to argue, I'm not here to make excuses. I'm just gonna take responsibility for it, clarify, and then we'll move forward. But starting today and on, there will be no floats going down that slide. You don't wanna go in and pay any more, uh, costs to fix that, you don't have to.
Thank you. Now, do you wanna, do you wanna respond, any matter, Ginger?
He's talking about two on safety, arm floaties, that's not, isn't, that's what they are for, they are for to keep the child going underwater, that is, that is.
No, you can't.
And, like I said, I pay my tax dollars, and that nine thousand, he's talking about it, for everything.
Will she get through?
I pay a thousand, right at fifteen hundred dollars a year, my fifteen hundred dollars itself would fix just a crack on a slide.
Okay. Did you wanna make one more comment or rebuttal?
I wanna say that we have seen kids come down that slide and lose floaties. They have come down there and come off, and the floaties have flown off. They, they have gone out of the water and had to pull them in. They're not guaranteed to stay on. I saw two kids run around there today. I, I mean, they were barely on them, I mean, but they had them on, but they could easily hang off those kids at any moment in that pool.
Okay.
Mayor, can I just ask a common sense question here?
For a kid, a kid.
Would that be possible?
Sure.
How's that slide put, is it, is it put together in sections?
Yes.
Okay, well, then you've got, you're a lawyer, right?
That's a question.
So, if you've got sections in that slide, and that kid come down that slide, and all of a sudden, that section caught that arm floatie and tore it off its arm, and he broke its arm, then what happens?
But if the manufacturer says not to use a floatie, you shouldn't use a floatie, so.
We'll get proper signage up, and I'll make sure that my lifeguard and everything, the staff knows they can't do that. But, I mean, that's just, it's a lot to handle.
Okay, thank y'all very much.
Well, is there, I got something else to say.
One more round, shot.
Is there a number or something that I can contact, whoever you all got this slide off of, to verify that?
Yeah, he'll give that, he'll give that to you. Okay? Thank you, Ginger.
I'll be right back.
Uh, anything else from the, uh?
I think it's pretty sad, huh? Mineral?
I'm making motion, we adjourn.
Second.
L-A-T-E-R-A-L.
We are adjourned.
You didn't answer the question.